Okay, welcome to the special committee of the whole meeting with the library board in Cleveland Heights City Council. Annie, would you call the role, please?
Cobb, Kuta.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Oh, yay!
All right.
And library board, you can go ahead and call your role.
Ms. Carla.
Ms. Willam.
Ms. Evo Mito.
Evo Mito.
Evo Moto.
Evo Moto.
I'm sorry.
Ms. McTigh.
Here.
Ms. Silver Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Trapp.
Yeah.
Here.
Ms. Terrez.
I certified the notification of this meeting, the library students.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. So we've kind of introduced ourselves. There are a couple other people at the table that we should also introduce. Go ahead, Deanna.
Sure, I'm Deanna Bremer Fisher. I am representing the city of University Heights. Mayor Brennan is not able to be here tonight.
Okay, and let's see. Everybody else is a board member. Of course Nancy Levin, the executive director, is here. Oh, and Deborah Herman. Go ahead, you can.
Deborah Herman, fiscal officer.
Okay, very good. So we're here to discuss the future of the Coventry Peace Campus. I'm gonna just say a few introductory remarks and then we'll go through the rest of the agenda. So this is about the former Coventry Elementary School, which did close in 2007. In 2018, the library board purchased the building from the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District for $1. Eventually Coventry Peace Campus was formed and there are currently 12 tenants in the building. The tenants have been given until the end of this year when their lease is up. There was a survey done by the library board earlier this year to gather public opinion and input. There was also a very well-attended community meeting over the summer to gather public input as well. Cleveland Heights City Council did pass a resolution last night to show support for keeping the building a vibrant arts and culture center. The library board has stated that it no longer wants to be a landlord, but wants to ensure that the building transfers to a financially stable entity that can fulfill all the current and future maintenance costs, which are estimated at $2.8 million. So we're gathered here today in the spirit of collaboration to try to problem solve. This building is public property. Tax dollars were invested to promote the public good and we're here to see if we can find a solution to the future of the Coventry Peace Campus. And as I think many of the library board members have said, this is a lot about, if not all, about the financial dilemma and stability. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Deborah Herman to talk about the financial end of this and then Vicas, then we'll turn it over to you to kind of talk about your meeting last night and kind of where things, you know, kind of give us a baseline of where we're at.
Thank you, President Kuta.
You're welcome.
This report that everyone was handed from council and my board members have seen previously is an assessment of the structural infrastructure needs of the Peace Campus building, including HVAC, windows, doors, electrical plumbing, lighting, paintings, security systems. That's $2.8 million, of their estimate. And when the library first acquired the building, we ran a separate segregated fund where we booked all the revenue that came in from the tenants for rent and operating expenses, but then the general fund paid for the maintenance and capital expenditures. And this report that you have shows from our accounting system, all of the expenses the library has paid for repairs, cleaning, trash, electrical, plumbing and all that. And since the time we took over the building, this report was run on the 18th and it said it was $446,000 that the library spent. And since that time, we've paid another invoice for $14,437. So we're up to $460,000 of general fund taxpayer money that's gone to pay for improvements in the building. And over each of the last several years, the general fund has allocated in the budget approximately $200,000 to cover repairs and maintenance items that are needed at the building. So the library's invested quite a bit of taxpayer money in funding this building that is not open to the public and it's run by private organizations. That's all I have. If anyone has any questions.
The only question I would ask is, how much revenue is collected a year or how much revenue has been collected to date?
I don't have that report because it wasn't, it didn't go into the general fund. It went into a separate special revenue fund. And I'd say probably about $150,000 a year came in and that basically just covered the rent or covered the utilities, gas, electric, phone, security, trash, and then any repairs that were needed for the internet service that, the provider that they used and that. So their rent and operating expenses were never co-mingled with general fund. And we haven't had any revenue since 2023 when we hired Cresco to take over running the building. All that money gets paid to them as the property manager.
Are they still?
And the utility.
Yes, they pay all the utilities directly. We're not paying any of the bills other than the maintenance items currently for the building.
Any questions about financials? Please, go ahead.
President, an employee of the library happened to send this to me maybe about a week or week and a half ago. I have some questions about it. Would you like for me to ask them here or would it be better if I did it outside of this meeting?
I don't know. I don't have any figures at hand other than what's in these reports.
Mr. President, do you have a preference?
I do. Honestly, I think it's irrelevant to the discussion. I think you can certainly find out details about any of those things. And there were corrections made. You can see that there are corrections made. But I think we're talking about the future and not the past. And so if we can just keep the conversation on the future, I think that would be good because the library board has already made decisions about the past.
That works for me. Debbie, if it's okay, could I reach out to you?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Then I, I don't know, should I be asking for questions?
I'm just gonna go reach out to Deborah independently and copy my peers.
Okay, Vicas, why don't you get us started with the discussion last night and where the library board stands to date?
Okay, a couple things. First of all, when you opened, you said you had a line about the library isn't interested in being a landlord and that we're looking to transfer the building. And that is not what we're doing. We are, you know, we're here to kind of discuss like financial stability with it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we are looking to offload that building onto somebody. And the other thing you mentioned, and Debbie also kind of covered this, but you know, it being a public building, paid for the public tax dollars. But you know, it's not being used for public use currently. It's private use. You have to be, you know, a member of the organization to go in there or doing something with one of those organizations. As far as what we have kind of discussed and come up with as a board, one of the, one of the, one of the biggest issues we have has to do philosophically with the use of the building and the fact that it's not open for public use, that this is, you know, public money is going into the building in library funds, but that it's not, that there's nothing there really that that's geared towards the general public. And that is, that is a big problem we have philosophically with it. We're concerned about the future of the building, especially with the peace park, with the renovation and kind of the investment that we've been putting into that. We want to ensure that, you know, this building doesn't fall apart. We want to ensure that it doesn't, you know, kind of, I guess, ruin what is otherwise going to be an amazing park. And are there, does that cover, you think?
Right. I think the biggest thing for me personally as a library board member is a sustainable plan. Since I've been on the board every 12 months or 18 months or two years, it seems like we're having similar discussions. And I don't want to keep passing this problem down to the next board, this sustainability issue that we see with the building and the fact that we are continuing to invest library funds in a building that's not serving library purposes. And I think I'm open to what solutions the city council might have for this. But the biggest question for me is what can, what is sustainable so that we're not having these same discussions every, every time the lease term is up?
I think, I mean, those are the big issues that we want to talk about. Go ahead.
I'll chime in if that's okay. There's a lot of language being used and I think what we spent a lot of time last night was defining words. So your resolution said arts hub? Is that what you said? So it never, it was a hub for certain organizations, not all of the artists in Cleveland Heights or in University Heights. It was, it was a place where some of them were there before we came and we let them stay and some we did to just fill up the space because we were losing money every day. And we have seen large tenants leave, like Ensemble and Family Connections for their own reasons. And I want to say that there are precedents to what we're doing. When Heights Arts first took a space in the library building on Lee Road, they were downstairs where Family Connections is now. And we had a problem because they weren't offering classes for the public that were free. And we had a conversation with Peggy and said, you know, this is not the way the library should operate. And she decided, you know, we decided together that if that was the mission that we were trying to put forward, that she would find another space. And she did. And they're down on Lee Road and they pay $18 a square foot or something like that. I'm not sure exactly what the number is. But I think the arts hub in Cleveland Heights is Kane Park. And I think Annette pointed that out earlier to me today, that if it, if we're using public dollars and it's a public building, then we, we have many opportunities in our communities to use the assets we have and not use a building that is too big for the purpose and half-empty and needing a lot of repairs off the street, not really in a, it has some accessible features, but it is not an accessible building. And it's, it's certainly too big of a load for the library, but that does not mean that we're looking to get rid of it either. It's still our, our property. And I think, I think we have to be fast, we're using fast and loose this arts hub thing. And I think we need to be really careful about how we define that. My idea of an art hub, a municipal art hub or a community art hub would be like some of the places that Patty has talked to us about, the Quirk Center in Cuyahoga Falls. In Akron, there's the Apex Center, I believe. Is that, no, it's not called that. No, Shores and New Good. Akron has a center. Those are funded with community dollars through levies and they have staff. They have dedicated personnel who offer public classes and they have equipment that people don't, can't afford to have in their homes or don't have in their homes, like darkrooms and kilns and big dance studios. And the closest thing that I can think of that we've ever had in Cleveland Heights in my time was like the JCC, which offered all kinds of classes. They, they certainly cost money, but those covered the cost of offering the classes. But, but even that was owned by an entity that wasn't municipal. It was the JCC. So while, I will correct because the tenants do offer some public programs, some things are for free. It's not the predominant model that they're using. And I, I would zero in mostly on Artful because they're, they're the biggest one and they're harder to move. We understand that. And, but they, they are individual artists doing their own work for sale. And some of them have some classes, but it's not the model that they're using. And Artful charges them rent and resells the space for the benefit of being in that building, but that is not a public use. So in my opinion, so, and in the library's opinion. So I think if we want an arts hub in Cleveland Heights, I think we have to redefine what that is and truly make it a public offering.
So I do see the utility in defining what a public purpose is before we get to like, what can we do as partners to maybe make this work? At least, you know, what, what could a role for the city of Cleveland Heights be and perhaps the city of University Heights? So I don't know where that line is, but like I taught at a public school, you can't just walk in to that off the street and say, you know, here I am. There's, there's limits to every public purpose. I mean, to every public building as far as its public purpose. You know, parents can come in when it's open house, but they can't just walk in the door, you know, during the day. So I guess what I, what I would like to.
They sure can.
Well, they can to, you know, if they make an appointment and so forth. Now, I just don't know where that line is at the Coventry Peace Campus. I do know they do open it up to the public for events. And I do, and I've been there when they've had art classes going on at night that I assume are open to whoever wants to sign up for that. So where, I mean, so when we're looking at the future of the building and you want it to be a public purpose, I'm not sure what that is. I'm not sure where that actual.
Well, what I, the research that I had done on Shore and Cuyahoga Falls and then a couple other, even some non-civic, civically owned, 78th Street and Fair Hill, they're open for, like the library, it's open for hours. And when you go for those, between those business hours, you can get inside. Yes, there's security, there's staff, but that's, I think, what the ideal state here. It wouldn't be there's a program, maybe one evening a month. It would be that there are regularly, there's regular hours that the building would be open, that people could come and expect programming.
So what kind of tenant would be, or tenants would be, would fulfill that?
It doesn't have to be this building. What I'm saying is if the city, I mean, I, we care about the citizens of our two cities. We are trying to, we are trying to move the conversation forward to a different idea that it should be, a committee should be formed, studies should be done. If you want to have a arts center, then you have to figure out how to fund it and how to have teachers and how to have the equipment. And I would strongly say that this is not the building to do it in. You have a recreation center. So could there be classes there? Could there be classes in many of the empty buildings in Cleveland Heights or University Heights? Could there be a use in a school building at night? I mean, I don't know. And I'm not, I'm not putting it on the schools. The schools have plenty to say about this and maybe someday you'll hear from them. But, but if the idea, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a great idea, but not in this building with these people. The, the, the program should be run by a municipal authority who hires the staff and gets the equipment and is funded in perpetuity, if that's what we want. And it should be sustainable. It's not, it doesn't, this building is just by happenstance in the position that it's in today. It's because the schools rented it out to these particular people. Others came and went, but it's not, it was never formed with an idea of being the municipal art center in our community. It was only, that was their idea. That was not what they were doing. And that's our, we have a philosophical difference here that we are, we have been trying to talk to them about for years. And we didn't ask them to miss their deadline in April, but since we have a chance to get out, we're gonna get out. I mean, that, that decision, I think, has been made.
We're actually not talking about the same thing right now. I'm asking you about, and I'm asking all of you, about what you see as the purpose of the building. I understand you don't see it as a purpose.
Right. We, we don't know yet what the purpose of the building will be once they're gone. And we don't have to know because we need to finish our study. We haven't had time to do all the things we need to do.
So you want to save the building for a purpose to be named later?
We're not, we're not sure.
It's not, it's our building. We don't, it's not whether we're saving it or not. It's ours to consider what we want to do with it. It's, it's not being saved. It just continues in our property and we decide what will happen to it. But what we do know is this model has not worked. We made lots of, we had great ideas at the beginning. They were not followed through on, I would admit to either side, and it's a mess and we need it to stop.
So Vicas, I just want to get something straight. When you and I talked on the phone, one of the things that we talked about was, and this was, I'm gonna paraphrase something you said, please correct me if I'm wrong. I said, we spent a lot of time, this is you talking, we spent a lot of time on trying to remedy the situation that's here now and what we don't want. But we need to sit down, we, the library board, need to sit down and talk about what we do want. What I was hoping was you were going to, like last night, when you met, that you would be giving us some information about what you collectively.
Well, I mean, I think that's, that's what I did, right? Like collectively, we, we have this kind of philosophical hard line, right? About the, the idea of it being public-oriented. You know, and you brought up, I mean, I'm not thrilled with your comparison to a school because, I'm not thrilled with your comparison to a school because a school is providing a public service. And yes, anybody can't just walk in, but any child living in a district can walk in and be registered for that school. I think, you know, when we, as a library property, library property, we're, you know, going in our, looking at our mission statement, right? It's providing free access to things. That, that is part of our mission. So whatever is happening in that building that we own, we want it to be part of that mission, right? So I don't know what kind of tenant that would be. I don't know if we're going to have tenants. We don't know what we're going to do with the building. We're, we're looking at that. But we do know that, you know, as Nancy said, you know, what's there right now is not fitting philosophically with where the library needs to go with us.
I understand everything about what you, you don't want. I think that that's become very clear.
I mean, I can, I can frame it as in we want it to be public service oriented, like something to the public that's free.
And I mean, as we're trying to figure out how we, the city, Cleveland Heights, can partner, I guess, I thought maybe we'd be a little further, I thought you guys would be a little further aligned. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Councilman Posh first and then Councilwoman Larson.
So I think what would be helpful for us, I mean, I think we're in two different areas here. I mean, we have a council and we have a library board and we were meeting here in our building, to try to assist this effort, to try to see where we can fit together, where we can find assistance. I mean, I know we've got some leftover hardball money. I mean, we, we as a council invest in many things for the public good, look, look at the work that we do in our economic development department. But I think it would be helpful for us to understand what path you're on right now. So we, we understand some like some, I use the word non-negotiables. I mean, you have a non-negotiable, it needs to be for, for public use, okay? But where are you heading right now? Are you conducting studies? Do you have a timeframe? I mean, I think in order for us to sort of like get more aligned, I'd like to know what path you're on. And I just think that that would be a good starting point for us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We think that Nancy has stated it, Vicas has stated it, and Deborah has shown it. We're comfortable not knowing the path we're on because what we do know is we intend to use it more in line with library use. So we don't have the answer, Jim, that you're specifically asking, but we're comfortable with that because we know what our role is. We know our role. We don't come over here and ask you, let us do city council stuff. We do library stuff. And to be, you know, blunt with it, we've spent an incredulous amount of time, meeting, having extra meetings, doing some things where we're taking care of CPC stuff, which doesn't even align with our library mission, including this one today. And it's okay. I don't want anyone to be offended, but I want to be exact that we are not doing library stuff. So we're comfortable not knowing exactly what we intend to do with it yet.
I didn't necessarily ask what you were planning on doing with it. I asked, are you like conducting surveys, your plans?
We are, we passed a resolution at, in September, at the September meeting, to begin a facility study, to see what, what are potential uses for the building, what, what are potential uses for part of the building. I mean, we, we're really trying to look at all the possibilities. Yeah. So I mean, we, we don't know, but we, we are undertaking a study. And we're spending a good amount of money to do that because it matters to us. I mean, this isn't just, you know, we have been talking about this for years. This isn't a decision that we just randomly came to, right?
And if I could interject, tomorrow afternoon, Ms. Levin and our facilities manager are meeting with a company that does facility assessments. They did the facility assessment on the church on Kirkwood, that we bought that property for library purposes and they looked at it to see whether or not it could be reused and that. And we have a meeting tomorrow with them at 1:00 to move forward it in determining the condition of the building, adaptive reuse or library use within the premises.
It's all a cost-benefit analysis. So we need to know what the numbers are and we need to know, once we can get out from under this sort of public cloud that people want to say that we're some sort of villain, we are, we are really trying to do our job and that is to find the best use. If, if it's an unusual property, it's an unusual building, it has weird walls, it doesn't have ceilings over the rooms, you know, it is, it is hard to rent and hard to show. What we know, what we've learned is that the Boys and Girls Club closed 17 facilities in Northeast Ohio this year. We know that medical rehab, that kind of use is very, is growing in our communities in Cleveland. We know that there's always a need for daycare in Cleveland Heights and in surrounding areas. I, I can bring out the statistics. So we're fine, we're looking for what is the best use for this building. And it may not be as a arts hub. And we applaud the idea of having one. We would certainly like to support that effort, but we're saying not in this building. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you. I'm a little confused because when we spoke, it seemed to me that there was a huge concern about all the money that was going out of the general fund to support, to maintain the building.
Yeah.
So now tonight I'm hearing that you, you're not looking to offload the building.
We don't know yet. And we said that we would take until the end of the year to do our due diligence. 2024. It is October and it is October 9th. I have all of October, I mean, I feel the pressure. I have all of October, all of November, all of December to decide what I would recommend to the library to do with the building. That has nothing, it is a separate issue than what we want to do about our. That has nothing, it is a separate issue than what we want to do about our tenants. So if, if we are, we are following through on our leases, we are, we are using the, all of the contractual obligations that we have. If we keep the building occupied and the HBAC dies, we are on the, we have to fix it. So that is very much about the money. And again, if we decide, whatever we decide to do with the building will be very much about the money. So we, we, we don't want to put ourselves in a bind and say, we've decided we're going to sell it to you or give it to you or give it to somebody else or do whatever we're gonna do. We just don't know. And that is the, that is an honest, sincere answer. Well, so I don't, I don't, we're trying, last night, we spent a lot of time saying, we owe everyone the best answer we can give you and to the tenants about what will happen. We are being as clear as we can be about things that we know about. And we still have to find out what else is possible. I, it's not very often that you have a 62,000 square foot building that you have to, I mean, it's a gift in a way. If, if the city would like to use it for a new city hall, we can talk. That, but the, we have to separate the arts hub idea from this building. That's what we want to be sure about.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, sir, I'm clear about what I'm hearing. So we, we've got two issues. And the issue that it sounds like the city really needs to take a look at and support is, from your point of view, is how can we assist in creating that hub while you're taking a look at assessing the building, not only your facilities, but also the needs within those facilities? So if it's not here, where else would it be? And so it sounds like if we're going to be involved in this in any way is to help facilitate, if it's not going to happen in that building, where, where can we facilitate this and make this happen? Somewhere else in Cleveland Heights is what I'm, or University Heights is what I'm hearing. And, and so we, we really need to separate those two out in terms of any support that we're giving or any, any kind of decisions that we can help kind of bring along about where they are. Really, it's that issue there. That you're seeing it as a completely separate issue that you're holding, rightfully so in terms of what you're going to do with the, with the property that you own. And so you really want those conversations separated out. And it sounds like they've been conflated to you guys. And, and those, those two issues are being mixed. And so that, that, I just want to make sure that's what I'm hearing clearly here, but...
No fault of anyone. We're just, we're, this is how decisions get made. You consider what you, what, all the data that you have. You try to get more data. You need to consult experts, you know? And we are certainly open to suggestions. And we are open to possibly doing something once we figure out where we're going with this. But I can't say today that we're gonna do X or Y. But, but again, if, if the arts hub is the thing, I mean, it's a great idea. It makes sense for our community. You've got Kane Park, use it, you know? If, if a new building needs to be built or if, or if you can repurpose a building, that's wonderful. But this building is so big and it is so wonky. We don't see it as being an efficient use of that space. And therefore, you know, it's like Shark Tank, we're out, you know? So that, that's where we are today. So I said to you the other day, I don't know if it's time to have this meeting yet. And that's what I meant. We are, we're still in our process. And you're, you're understandably hearing the woes of the tenants because they're unhappy with the decision we've made. But, but it's not, this is not our problem to solve by ourselves. If, if this is what the community wants, then let's do it. The library offers arts classes all the time. And they change all the time. And we don't have a arts hub that's like dedicated, although we do have now two maker spaces. And we do support artists all the time. And we support many of these organizations. In fact, we're bringing Jeff Smith to town in two weeks with Lake Erie, Inc. We continue to work with them. They're a great organization, you know, no problem. But it, the tenancy is the thing that is causing us all the heartburn. And that's what we need to finish.
Sir President? I think the reality is that the residents see it as an arts hub. And they have made very clear to us as council members that they want it to be preserved for that purpose. And so I think that we should, while considering all possibilities, really try to focus our efforts on preserving it for that purpose. Especially because it's the path of least resistance. It is so much easier to preserve that building for that purpose than it is to go out and either purchase something different or build something different. And so I think that what might be helpful, what I think might be a productive next step is trying to better understand, folks shared some of the things that they would like to see, like increased public access. I actually agree with that point. And I think that there's a lot that could be done there. But just documenting and understanding what all the things that the library would like to see are. And then from that point, people, whether it's Mayor Brennan's staff or a combination of library board members and council members, could think creatively and try to come up with a solution that might satisfy those requirements of the library. So that's the, the path that I see.
You know, that's, that's kind of my question, really. What, if, if the tenants that are currently in there would agree to make it a more public building and satisfy the, the model that you're talking about, is that even a possibility? It's not that I'm trying to change your minds. I'm just trying to figure out if, if that's what the library board would consider a library purpose, a more open building to the public. If that's the biggest stumbling block, I mean, you already have 12 tenants. That's something you can build on. I, I own, it doesn't, since you're kind of at square zero...
24 of those tenants could possibly offer arts and education publicly facing. The other...
I missed the very beginning of what you said.
About four out of those 12 tenants could actually offer programming. You know, the ballet and the two arts organizations and Lake Erie, Inc. Otherwise, we're talking about small nonprofits that are using the space. But, and yeah, so I don't, I don't know that, that number 12 gets used a lot. But I don't know that that actually is reflective of the, the maximum volume of programming that is available, whether it's private or public.
No, I just wanted to understand if, if that's the biggest stumbling block, if that could be solved. Go ahead.
To go to, back to Councilman Petrus's point about adaptive reuse. And we are doing that facilities assessment. I have been combing wherever I can find for adaptive reuse of school buildings. There's lots of examples of that. But if you look at this building, which was built to be a school building, but also a very specific type of school building with that open classroom concept, I'm not seeing examples of that. And, and perhaps if University Heights has offered staff support, maybe they have better ways to find examples of this. The only example I have found, and I'm not entirely sure if it's an open classroom or just a school building built in the 1970s, because that's where I began to zero in on when I couldn't find any examples of open classroom concept buildings being reused. That building in Levittown, Pennsylvania is being turned into a storage facility, which is, is not in line with what we're looking at either. So, you know, my question would be, when we're looking at adaptive reuse is, is this building really able to be reused in a way that's sustainable without lots and lots of money being invested into it?
Because some context, real quick, Melissa, then. There you go. In the last 12 years, the library's invested $20 million into our various properties in Cleveland Heights and University Heights, all with the purpose of public using good. I know Councilman Posh mentioned some ARPA funds. As our study from Cresco shows, to just make it sustainable and safe is about $2.8 million. And the tenants have their study that says, we'll even take to that number, $1 point X million. If we are to put more public dollars into this space, that means we'll potentially need to go for a levy for the public sooner. And if, if the city wants to use some ARPA funds, which I don't believe there's more than a million left to, to support a project like this, that doesn't necessarily benefit the whole 40,000 plus residents of the city. There are...
Or University.
Or University Heights. Because we have to talk about both cities, right? So that's just something I, I would look for some guidance on is that this offer of ARPA funds for the building specifically, how would that get us to make this building safe and usable and, and sustainable beyond just patchwork?
Yes, Ty.
Yes, go ahead, Melissa, I'm sorry.
This follows up with, with my point. Councilman Petrus, you said, quote, the, the, the residents have made it clear they, they support this, you know, keeping this building the way it is with the tenants. And that caught my ear because I'm not sure we've actually heard from all of the residents. We've heard from a lot of the tenants who have done an incredibly successful PR campaign. Phenomenally successful PR campaign.
We do hear from regular residents who aren't in favor of this, though. We do.
Or the library board.
Mr. President. During our regular meeting, Mr. President.
Hold on, go ahead and finish.
Please be for yourself, though, because we had the Noble opening. And I spoke to a lot of people.
Can Melissa finish?
And what was the evidence there?
I have the floor.
Tina, I want to let her finish.
I will yield when my three minutes are up. I got in maybe a minute and 20 seconds. And so to the rest of my point, this has not been put legally before the community. And if it is, in following Ty, would this city council, which much to my shock has taken up this issue with so much emotion behind it, in a way, I haven't seen a city council take up an issue in such a way so quickly regarding a tenant landlord dispute so quickly. Would you put it on the ballot, backing it up with an arts and council levy?
Mr. President?
Well, I don't think we're there right now. Go ahead.
During, during our regular meetings, I'm accustomed to people raising their hands and being recognized. I think that that would ensure that we maintain order. There's been some cross-talk. And I think that that would be best if we're able to do that. I also think that it would be helpful if we tried to avoid using tones that could be perceived as condescending or demeaning. So, thank you.
Okay. I just want to say that, that we're here to collaborate with you. When you came and asked for money for the playground, we, you know, we wanted to help. And, and we're in that same mode right now. We're not in the mode, I just want to dispel this, because I did hear it from one person, that we're here to dictate to you about what you should do. We're here to help. You know, we didn't say, hey, here's where you should put the swing set. You know, we, we just, you guys asked for the money. And we were like, hey, you know, this is a great cause and we want to do that. And we also, through the resolution that we passed last night, we're basically saying, we want to help preserve this as an arts hub. Maybe this isn't the way you want to go. But we would be willing, I think we expressed a willingness to help if that were the purpose. Maybe that cannot be. I, I, I'm not saying, I don't think anybody on council said, this is what it has to be. But I do think in the spirit of like, if we, if there's a way to make this work, we'd like to help make it work. And so hopefully it's in that manner that you're taking this. Go ahead. And then, Councilman.
I want to address a couple of things that people have been saying. So one, back to you, Councilman Maddox. Your question about the separation, I think 100% you are on target with what we're talking about. I think, you know, Tony, you were asking about, okay, if, if in some way we were able to, like, the organizations were able to do something more public facing, would that solve the problem? And that might address the philosophical part. But this gets, and this gets to you too, Councilwoman Larson, the, the money part. The money, the, the financial stability thing is, is still a very big part of this, right? And, you know, one of the things, and Ty brought this up, but like, one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about yesterday in our board meeting, in our committee meeting, was the staffing for the new Noble branch and the amount of money that that costs. And, you know, where our library dollars are going. And so, you know, we, we approved new staffing. But that was, that was a debate. And we spent a lot of time talking about that money. And I, I don't remember, Debbie, is, was, was it about $100,000 a year?
Just under $100,000.
Right? And we, we are putting like, I, I think about that much per year into the Coventry Peace Building? Is that what it's?
Based on the staff we hired in July and you approved last night, it's about $300,000 more of additional staff and benefits for the Noble building itself.
Okay. And so, I mean, I feel like we are putting all this money into the peace building. And it, it was so clear to me yesterday that like, this money needs to be going towards library things and, and kind of making, making those improvements in the services again for, for all. I think, I think that covered what I want. Oh, I guess one other thing. You know, in thinking about the, the hearing, and Melissa was getting at this, but hearing about support for this from residents, when I, I look at our meetings, we, we have a lot of public comment that is in support of the, the tenants. But those comments are coming from the tenants or people directly involved with the tenants. We are also getting, I'm hearing from a lot of people who are not supporting the idea of library money going towards this building. We've gotten emails, been approached at our different events when we had the, the event over the summer with the groundbreaking the Peace Park. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of people also unhappy with it. They are less public about it, you know? And I can understand why. I mean, when we had, we had the discussion session, kind of post survey, right? And it, it was like a, it was like a rally for the, the Peace Park. And no one, there were, there were certainly people there who were not supportive, but they did not feel comfortable speaking in that environment. Right? So I think just because these are the voices that we're hearing at the meetings, I, I don't think that, that, that means that these are the, this is the majority opinion of the residents of, of these two cities. I think that's something that we have to also keep in mind.
I'm sure that's true. Councilman, I'm calling you a second. Just having seen the survey results, the 160 people that came to the open meeting, and they were not by any means, I mean, anybody who wanted to come to the meeting could come to the meeting. I would assume that, that, you know, that there would have been people there vocal about supporting, doing something else and having the tenants out. I didn't, I just haven't heard it, that's all. And, and, and I just want to turn it over to Councilman Maddox here.
I, just to piggyback off of that point for the public, this is something that council has dealt with a lot. And, and I want to address this simply because Councilman Petrus brought that up again, is that we've got to stop assuming that the voice of the community are in these rooms. That, these rooms, I, I can't tell you the amount of conversations I've had about every issue in this city, from racial injustice to safety to housing, where the representation in this room has been mostly white. And that is not the city. And so I, I, we can have a conversation, we've got to have an open conversation about the fact that this city and the people who come into this room don't necessarily speak for the majority of residents. And so I, I'm getting the same feedback as everyone else. I'm, I'm getting people who are for and against. And so we, we've got to stop this attitude of, well, they didn't show up to the meeting. There are tons of residents in this city that will never come up to a meeting and speak out or for something. And so we've got to stop assuming that the people that we're looking at are, are the voice of the community, not just with this issue, but in many. And that, that's been a struggle that I have a lot. There's a lot of assumptions made about how people feel about things without surveys, without communication. And so I don't want to hear that stated again unless someone is pulling some type of data or showing me where this feedback is coming from. Because it, it's, it's very, it's a lie without facts. It's just opinion, it's just a feeling. And, and I don't want to manipulate the public and anyone watching this. I'm not saying that the majority of the public is for or against this. I'm saying we do not know. And so we have to be careful when we start speaking on behalf of the residents of both two cities, not just Cleveland Heights, but University Heights without any data or any facts. facts. I think they want us to flesh this out. From what I'm understanding, there are plenty of residents who have concerns on both sides, but let's not say the majority of anything because we're watching the residents who come into this room, because there are entire groups of people who historically do not show up in spaces like this to speak ever, and they still exist. And I just want to make that clear.
And it's our obligation to speak for.
Absolutely, which is precisely the struggle that I have on this council many times, is that the people that have elected me, that I speak for, will never walk in this room, which is why they're trusting me to do the same. And I'm just, I want to make that clear, that that is not a sign of for or against anything.
Well, Councilman, I appreciate that and I agree with you about people, there are people that will never come here. I'm only, I'm only stating, here's what I've heard when I've been present, here are the surveys I have looked at. I'm not trying to, and Councilman, I want to make this clear to you, I'm not making assumptions about people I don't know. I am talking about what I do know. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not saying that's the only thing that counts. I'm not saying that either. Go ahead.
It takes a huge amount of privilege to be able to sit on either of these bodies. For us, you know, we've talked about this before, the barrier to entry to be even able to sit on this library board is we are unpaid volunteers for seven years. What kind of resources does that take in order to be able to put this work in? And the generosity of our time as well. We are not a large elected, heavily paid group of people that are trying to lord anything. And I think that that is a kind of characterization that's been made. But yeah, it takes a huge amount of privilege to be able to sit here and to be able to be part of this decision-making process, to have the time, to be able to be off work, to come talk at these meetings, to be able to have your ear, to be able to have your ear. To be able to talk to each one of you and get you to do something is a huge amount of privilege. And we are all sitting here on the library board having taken an oath to protect the library and we're trying to do the very best we can at that. And it's a hard position for a group of people who love libraries and never wanted to be a landlord. So, in terms of the issue, what I wanted to say is, I understand that this issue is new to your desks. I understand it's new. It is not new to library. Now, it's new to my desk because this is my first year and I've been, you know, catching up with everybody else, but this isn't a new issue. This isn't, I feel that there's this idea that, well, let's, let's try it again or, you know, I haven't heard any suggestions of how it would be different this time. This issue has been going on for almost a decade. And that's what you have to remember, is that this, it's new to you. It isn't new. So, what's different this time? What's going to make it work this time?
Now, that's a fair question. Go ahead, Councilman.
Welcome.
No, go ahead.
I think that what's different is that, I think that I've heard that the library board is, hasn't been able to work with Coventry Peace Campus as effectively as it wanted to. And there are other folks like you on council and Mayor Brennan who are willing to come and try to work to come up with a solution that might be different. And so, I think, like I said earlier, I think that a productive next step is to try to document the things the library would like to see. And then, from there, we can think creatively about ways that we might be able to create an arrangement.
All right. Let me go to Deanna and then Deanna.
Thank you. What I'd like to say is that what is different this time is that instead of the library taking this on on its own or saying to Coventry Peace Campus and the tenants, you've got to do this on your own, we are coming together and are offering some assistance and perhaps, you know, another way to manage the whole process. We talked about public access and that's important. How can we improve public access and make it more public-serving? We talked about the financial issues. The building needs some repairs. How can we address that issue? So, these are issues that could be solved if we work together on it, but not if we insist on one path for someone to do it all by themselves.
Let me go to Deanna.
She can. She can yield.
Maybe Dana, you're going to say the same thing. I mean, if, if you, I will turn it on a Ted, Jim. It's not what the library wants, it's what the community wants. And if you, if you are right that we need an arts hub, we are just saying, find one that is, would be efficient and do that job for everybody publicly and will be able to be sustainable going forward in whatever way it's funded that is needed. The library knows what it needs to do. We know that we are going to empty this building and mothball it until we have a plan that we like. We are allowed to do that. But if the community wants an arts hub, then the community can talk to all of us and it is really for you to say, wait, we're the city council, we're going to say this community needs X, Y, and Z, and this is how we'll do it. We're not, this is not our problem to solve, it's yours. We, the library is going, is already on the path, right? I mean, I don't think, and I, I have to say, it still sounds like you're telling us what to do. So, I, I can agree that we could use an arts hub in Cleveland Heights. It just, I think we need to start focusing on another way to solve that problem. I think the library has spoken and said that's not going to be the solution.
And so, at this late date.
Right.
Anthony has already pointed out what we require here, which is the separation of the two issues. And if you wanted to further pursue, let me interrupt myself, it's not fair to these people for you to jump in at this late date and think that this can be reconciled differently by, you know, persuasion, because we're dealing with, this one report Deb passed, hard, hard facts, hard facts, and they didn't just come to our desk. So, again, the separation of issues is not really negotiable. And then, we're more than willing, why wouldn't we be? We've been partners in tons of things. We're willing to work with you to make even what you just referenced, Deanna, some type of art hub feasible, but it's misleading to make them think we're going to get this done in the CPC building this quick by December and blah blah. Come on. This is, you know, we can do two things, three, four, maybe five are required here. But what we're clear on is that there is a separation of issues. We're going to pursue, again, which we do not know what we're doing with the building yet, but we're going to pursue that. And then, we will come back to the public as a whole, like we do with everything else, and try and represent these two cities, this public funding we receive and the library system. That's what we're going to do. And then, we can do separate things in terms of some type of arts hub or whatever in CHUH.
Well, I think we're about ready to talk about next steps at this point, because if this is a hard and fast, the tenants are out at the end of this year and there's no negotiating that, even with some help from the cities, what would you like to see happen next?
Again.
Sure, Mike on?
Sorry.
There you go.
We, I will dedicate my time, I'm not going to obligate any board members. If we want to work as a community to create an arts hub, let's do that. And let's do it, what you can do to help is help, help these tenants find a new place to be, which I have, I have talked to the city housing or development people a number of times, which we have also been looking for spaces that could be available. You know, this is not an easy problem to solve, but I think that's where your attentions as a city can be very helpful for the short term. And for the long term, let's talk about an arts hub. But again, I don't, it's not going to be that building.
I'm going to see if there's, go ahead, Deanna.
So, I hear you. And so, I think what you're saying is that the arts hub that currently exists.
It's not.
Is going to be destroyed. And that's something that, because that's, that's the logical course of events based on what I'm hearing.
It's not an art hub.
So, I just want to be clear about that, because it's not easy to create an arts hub. This is something that was created organically by the community. These folks who are in the building are residents of both communities and other communities and supported by people in the neighborhood as well as the surrounding area. It's not something that's easily recreated, so I think we have to think very carefully about what we're doing.
Go ahead. No, Nancy, go ahead.
No, we haven't. That's why it's taking so long.
I mean, we, I don't like the implication that we haven't thought about it very carefully and that we haven't put hours and hours into this.
Years.
We, we have spent so much time thinking about this very carefully, right? We have listened and we have worked, we tried two different plans to try to make this work. And so, I don't, I don't think that that is a fair assessment at all of what we have done as a board in trying to make this work.
Right.
Go ahead, Councilman Petrus.
Thank you. What I know to be true is that virtually everything is negotiable and I really think that it comes down to whether we have the will to try to preserve it for this purpose. The reality is that the residents of this city, regardless of how other people may feel, the reality is that the average person sees that as a hub for arts and culture. And I think.
You don't know how they see it.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking, but just to reiterate, that's what I said earlier, that I think that we need to focus on trying our level best to preserve it for that purpose. That's what the residents are expecting of us. We have been very generous in supporting both the tenants of the building and the library. We're very grateful for everything that everyone contributes to the city. And I think that we could do it. We could do it if we come together, sit down, we are asked, what is different about this time? As we've said, there are city resources that are interested and willing to try to hash this out, and I think that we can do it.
I don't.
It's really important to hold the line that Councilman Maddox said, which is not speaking for people we don't know. The residents have not spoken on this.
Some have, only some.
Only.
And only some of them many, many times saying the same thing over and over again.
Go ahead, Vickers.
And it's not a majority. I don't know where you are making that up from, but it is not a majority. I mean, it's the majority of the voices that you have heard from the people who've come to meetings, people who have time, right? There are a lot of people, one, who have no idea what is even going on because they're just not paying attention to it. They've got lives to lead and they have no interest either way, right? And they do have, well, they will have an interest when, you know, a levy comes around and then they've got to pay more money. But I don't think it is fair in any way to say that there's a majority of residents who are clamoring for this. And I don't even think it's fair to say that there's a majority of residents who think it's an arts hub. It's, they think of it as a building that has some nonprofits in it. It, you know, again, it's not a.
Just because.
Public-serving arts hub. It's not a place where everyone is going to create and there's a whole bunch of programming for the general public.
I'm sorry, who, somebody, Nancy, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, just for clarification, I have not heard from a majority of residents. Of those who I, to your point, of those who I've heard from, who most people have heard from, the overwhelming consensus is that they would like for that to be used for that purpose. And that is also what the survey responses show. So, that, I think, is reflective of the opinion of this city.
But how many people responded to that survey?
It's not fair to say that a majority of people do not support.
I don't, I don't think I should do the cross-talk.
I'm not, I'm not saying that they don't, but I'm, I really take issue with the idea that, I mean, like, how many people respond to the survey? How many people live in the city and the two cities?
24,000 plus Cleveland Heights, 26,000 plus University Heights.
Well, that's going to happen every, every time.
No, no, I understand, but what I'm saying is for the voices, you know, and talking about the voices that we're hearing, it is, it is a very small, you know, percentage of voices that we're hearing. And they are voices that are, you know, again, driven by the idea of wanting to preserve that place because they're involved, many of them. And I get that. I'm not critical of that, but I think, I am critical of the idea of us listening to those voices and saying, oh, clearly this is something that so many people, like the majority of the city wants or a lot of the city wants. Like, no, but I don't think that at all. And I think to make that conclusion is really disrespectful to a lot of the public.
Well, let's, let's, let's just, oh, go ahead, Dana, I'm sorry.
I, to, what is it, Councilman Larson? What's his name?
Petrus.
Petrus. I'm going to state two things. One, there was an event where we did the library opening for Noble, which the attendance was approximately, what? Approximately 2,000 people. That's in the heart of all of this going on. So, that was this summer, what, July? Okay. Not one. I interacted, I was there the whole time and I interacted with hundreds of people. Not one, not one pushed for CPC. But I want you also to be clear that our roles are not the same. Where you sit as city council and where we sit as the library board of trustees to support this administration is not the same role. And our obligations, therefore, to the citizens of both cities is not the same. Our funding, not the same. So, if you choose to move in your role how you choose, I don't even know, Vickers, that we should be offended because he's moving in a different manner. We have obligations to the library organization, to the way we receive our funding and even to the tenants, which it does get cloudy and it feels like we're against whomever. We have obligations to not mislead them. We have obligations. We cannot just sit here and keep going on and on. We're going, no. You move how you need to move. Again, we've stated, we're interested in being partners or co-collaborators, you know, with an arts hub, but it is not our obligation to make it the library's asset, which is that CPC building, and we do not have to continue that use because it does not serve our mission.
All right. Well, with that, I think that we're looking at, at next steps that.
We, we've talked about this a little bit, Tony and I. I mean, if, I think those who are interested in creating an art center should absolutely move on that, in that direction. And again, I will offer my assistance. I, I have all sorts of ideas. I had a vision in 2000 and whatever it was, 17. I'm disappointed that it didn't come to be. I still think the idea was good and I would be happy to share all of the studies and all the things we've learned. Deanna brought us IFF. You know, they had all these good recommendations. They were dismissed by the tenants at that time. Yeah, January 2019, I was at the meeting. And I think there are lots of, this is a community that would get behind that idea, but it has to be efficiently run. And the library board, you know, we are funded by 2% of the property taxes or something like that. Our funding goes in an ARC because we, the biggest part of our funding is for staff. It's like 65% of our funding. Staff costs go up, they don't come back down again. And so, our ARC of levy money is starting to tip back down. We're also faced with cuts and I know the cities are, so I'm not telling you something you don't know, but the state of Ohio has been cutting local government funds for 20 years and we are, we're a victim to it, you're a victim to it. We have people in the state house who want to shut all the public libraries down and want to ban our books and do all sorts of things. Our public library fund, which is our money from the state, has been cut and is going to continue to be cut because of that same kind of current in the, in the legislature. And we don't, our property taxes don't go up when the values go up, we stay back at 2014 and, and whatever the other levies were. So, even this new evaluation that the county did has nothing, does not do anything to help us. So, we are, we are going to have to go for levy in maybe 2006, we'd like to make it, or 2026, sorry, 20 years. Maybe make it 2027 if we can. And every year that we extend it is a huge win for everyone. We don't want to raise the taxes for anybody, but, but our costs just go up. And in 2017, when we got the building, we had expectations that the money would come back, some of it, none of it has. The rent covers what it covers. It covers the daily use of the building, it does not cover the capital expenses, and they are growing. So, we've tried, we've had three different leases, trying three different ways. The tenants say, we can't spend any, we can't give you any more money in rent. And then, they come up with a pro forma that all of a sudden there's more money there. Like, it just isn't working. And you don't want to be, I don't, I can't imagine going forward with these tenants in the, in the atmosphere that has been created, because it's over.
Thank you, Nancy. You know, I think that there are some on council that wanted to find a path where we could contribute something and keep the tenants in the building, but that's your decision. And I, I think it's pretty clear where you're at. And we still want to work with you in the future and, and, you know, do whatever we can to have an arts and culture center. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry that it can't be at the Coventry Peace Campus, at least not according to the members of the board, and it is your decision to make. I do want to thank you for being willing to sit down with us and air this out. I think you've made yourselves clear tonight. I thank council and Deanna for representing University Heights. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting.